Under God, Indivisible, et inimicus.
I think it was time for public comments, which I believe we have now. So on to informational items. First informational item is the certified employment issuance of twenty-three, twenty-four certified contracts.
Mister President, members of the board, the administration is requesting board approval for the issuance of contracts to the listed teachers. Do you want me to read their names?
Uh, don't believe that. I don't believe in YouTube. We can read them.
Okay. And there is no board action necessary. This is an informational item only.
Any questions? Okay, next item, certified employment, twenty-three, teacher Maria Vasquez Olivas.
Mister President, members of the board, we're very excited about this next part of the agenda. Maria Vasquez Olivas has been interviewed for the position of classroom teacher for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four academic year. Reference checks are in progress and a certified contract will be issued once satisfactory references are required. I just want to state that she comes to us with really impressive credentials. A BA in Spanish literature from twenty-eleven to twenty-fifteen, master's in education twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty-one, six years teaching secondary literature from Monterrey, Nuevo León, Mexico. So this will be, I think, a great opportunity to create a new connection with other teachers. Teaching tenth grade right now, experience teaching in reading, Brave New World, Shakespeare, cooperative learning groups, and so no board action necessary, but I just wanted to share her background. Very impressive.
Thanks. Next item, certified employment, twenty-three, twenty-four, teacher Mark Quitt.
Yes. Mister President, members of the board, Mark Quitt has been interviewed for the position of classroom teacher for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, academic year. Reference checks are in progress. Certified contract will be issued once satisfactory references are acquired. Mister Quitt, equally impressive. Two thousand and six to two thousand and seven, first, second, fifth, sixth grade math computer teacher. Two thousand and seven to two thousand and thirteen, experiencing grades one, two, and four as a lead teacher. Two thousand fourteen to present, grades two, three, and four. Background with a bachelor's in elementary education with a math focus and master's degree in educational psychology.
Next item is the certified employment, twenty-three, twenty-four, teacher Danesho Manigo.
Mister Hopkins, Danessa Manigo has been interviewed for the position of classroom teacher for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, academic year. Reference checks are in progress and a certified contract will be issued once satisfactory references are acquired. Miss Manigo equally impressive. Background in high school math, ten-plus years teaching in algebra, algebra two, and geometry. And so there's no board action necessary. This is an informational item only.
Next item is classified employment, maintenance custodian Andrew Groves.
Mister Hopkins, members of the board, Andrew Groves has been interviewed for the position of maintenance custodian. Mister Groves has his DPS issued fingerprint card. No board action necessary. This is informational item only. And the maintenance team is very excited about this new maintenance team member.
Next item, approval of employment of teachers for the spring intercession.
Mister Hopkins, members of the board, the following certified staff are being recommended to teach screen break intercession from March twenty to twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three. You have their names right there. There is no board action necessary. This is an informational item only.
Okay. Next item is extra paid position employment.
Mister Hopkins, members of the board, the following employees have expressed a desire to perform the designated extra paid positions for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Kayla Leon volleyball head coach, Gracie Nunez volleyball assistant coach. No board action necessary at this time. This is an informational item only.
Is there any questions? The next item is discussion of electric payroll system.
I believe it's about extra pay system.
No, I skipped the dress code. Wait.
Oh, we got theirs.
Age, run age.
I skipped a few of them, but okay. Next one is the reassignment of extra paid positions.
Okay, Mister Hopkins, members of the board, Joseyon and Eddie Vega, who were approved as the head and assistant baseball coaches at the February board meeting, are requesting a reassignment of positions, making Eddie Vega the baseball head coach and Joseyon the assistant baseball coach. With the reassignment of position comes the reassignment of supplemental pay from three thousand sixty to twenty-one ninety and vice versa. There is no board action necessary. This is an informational item only.
Next course, next item is the approval of proposition through the line additional certified salary schedule.
Yes, sir. Mister Hopkins and members of the board, I just wanted to share with you the process involved here. Administration in consultation with the twenty-two, twenty-three working conditions team made additions to the bottom of the certified salary schedule concerning Prop 301 performance pay. The administration and the working conditions team are requesting the ratification of attached certified salary schedule. Areas in green have been added, changed. So just for clarification, we met last Wednesday, the principal advisory committee, Dr. Kami, Coach Q, Ms. Yarian, Mister Manigo, Mister Casey, Dr. Shabot, and I. And we reviewed about having the Prop 301 pay directly below the certified salary schedule, just so that we can have it for potential recruits. As you see, we have several potential teachers tonight. So they can see what additional compensation, performance pay, which is what Dr. Shabot and the principal advisory committee worked on in the fall along with Ms. Smith and myself and our legal department about the performance plan. So up to fifty-six hundred and fourteen dollars can be earned through performance pay. And a retention bonus starting after a senior one year going to the second year here of up to fifty-six hundred and fourteen dollars. So this was shared with the principal advisory committee that the total compensation separate from the salary schedule for this coming year can range from eighty-four twenty-one to fourteen thousand thirty-five dollars. Eligibility depends on certification. And very critical also, this is what other districts put also as well on the salary schedule pertaining to 301 pay. All amounts are contingent upon funding from the state. That's all, Mister Hopkins.
One question I have. How long, we hire somebody that's not certified. How long does it generally take for them to get certified, if they're like what's? Well, I know it depends on how much they're doing towards it, but how quickly can you be done?
Well, I'm gonna give my response and I'll open it up also for Dr. Shabot and Ms. Angelina, because Ms. Angelina deals a lot with ADE back and forth. But we'd like for them to get that done as soon as possible. One thing that we are doing this year is that, and this is what other districts have also been doing, just in talking with other districts like Sunnyside Unified and Tucson, is our administration has been meeting with the teachers that have to update and get their certification updated as soon as possible. We're following up with the communication with them, calling it an action plan, where they share with us what specifically they have to get done. That way administration and teachers are on the same page. So that's what we've been doing from our perspective that other districts are also doing, but Angelina and I can also share some inside our own part.
So it depends on where the teacher's coming from. So if we get a teacher from California or New Mexico or Texas, it's really easy to get a certificate of reciprocity. If they have the equal certificate in that state, they can apply right away to to ADE and get for one year, it's called provisional, to get a one-year certificate to work if it's equal to the certificate that they're working on. If they're coming internationally, that's a little difficult just because they have to wait for their social security card, they have to wait for the thing, they have to wait for evaluated transcripts because ADE doesn't take foreign transcripts. So they have to get evaluated by a third company and say this is the equivalent to a BA in secondary, you know, whatever. So all of those steps have to be taken. Normally, if a teacher's really on it and they really are working towards getting where they need to be, they're usually certified by December.
Right, so how they do the year?
For the first year, yeah.
Okay, and in that case, that a teacher in that situation qualified for the 301 for the second half of the year?
For the second half of the year, right.
Did that change for reciprocal states? Because when I got my certification here, I got my certification, but then there was like a little asterisk that I had to take the Arizona constitution within three years, I think I had to get that done. So it was.
That reciprocal, that reciprocal only lasts for like a year or two years. They might have changed it for three years, but they give you that right away because it's the equivalent of, but then you have, still have to do everything Arizona requires you to do, subject knowledge, professional knowledge. Sometimes they, they need you to have a language, a language test, a language exam, like an ESOL. If you're, if you're a foreign teacher, sometimes they ask those of the foreign teachers, especially if they're teaching English as a second language or oh, the microphone went off. I'm sorry. It's still recording though. If you're, if you're coming from a foreign, if you're a foreign teacher and you're teaching English as a second language or English Language Arts, you have to get that extra, the test, just to check your.
Is that single subject English or does that include the primary grades?
No, that's just single subject English.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah, just like if you're a history teacher and you're coming from another state, you have to get the US Constitution and Arizona constitution before your three years are up.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so there's different things, but usually if, if a teacher's on it, they'll get their certification by November or December. You can always tell who's actually working towards it because they come in excited with their certificate. And then the other ones get the nasty emails from me every couple of months saying, I know, it's my monthly thing of bugging you that I haven't gotten your, you know, blah, blah, blah yet. So.
And Mister Hopkins, Mister Rodriguez, if I can, we wanted to have a more of an action plan this year, like that way, we've already met with every teacher that needs to get it updated as soon as possible. And then I'll follow up with an email, he's copied, that we're on the same page. But also in talking with Ms. Angelina, I shared with her to just start emailing the first to February, everybody who needs to get it done as soon as possible. That way we're getting reminders from her, we're meeting with them, just to stress that urgency. At the same time, in talking with other superintendents around Southern Arizona, there's a teacher crisis. There's a, there's a teacher shortage, so we want to do everything we can to show support, that we're trusting them. But at the same time, the reality is they have to get the certification updated as soon as possible. But there's still a teacher shortage. So we're just trying to all work together in collaboration.
Is there any more discussion on that? Okay, next item is discussion about dress code uniforms.
Mister President, members of the board, board members have requested a report discussion on dress code uniforms. The attached survey results were taken from seventh to twelfth grade students. Just a little bit of brief context, on March first, we had a student council meeting, Ms. Alan Cohen and the student council. We were about twenty, twenty to twenty-five high school, middle school students. I attended the meeting and just, we shared with them as far as the topic of dress code uniforms. We wanted to get student input first, just to get their feedback. You know, we figured, I'm talking with Ms. Alan Cohen, Dr. Shabot, Mister Casey and I, let's hear from the students, let's hear what they have to say. We went to our student leadership. And just pretty much, I listened for the most part for about fifteen, twenty minutes, and they just gave their input, very, very articulate. You know, why they like uniforms, why they don't like uniforms. And they, they come up with the leadership on their own, the class presidents of sending a survey out to students. As you can see, they have about a hundred students, seventh to twelfth graders. You have the pie chart that shows the feedback. And so there is no board action necessary. This is an informational discussion item only. But that's just for some of the context behind where we're at so far.
Can I comment, okay? So I'm probably not singling you out when I say this, okay? Just say that. So the reason that I wanted to put this on here is because my daughter was dress coded. I'm not angry or upset why she was dress coded. I understand why she was dress coded. But she wore short, short to school that had a gun on it. I understand why she was dress coded. But that same day that she was dress coded, I saw children with marijuana leaves on their shirts, marijuana socks, crop tops, this, that. Guns are just as illegal for children as marijuana is for children. So why are, why are, you know, yeah.
It's like a selective.
Yes, yes. So that is my biggest thing. If we're gonna do one kid, we need to do all the kids. Yeah.
Yeah, I agree though. You have a dress code that needs to be uniformed. I'm glad you believe in.
Personally, I would, as a parent, I would, I would prefer dress, a uniform personally. It's cheaper all the way around. Yeah.
Isn't it?
Yes, it is, because you can get a uniform shirt, just a regular polo shirt for about seven dollars versus repaying anywhere from ten to fifteen dollars for a shirt.
I think these parents are gonna be buying non-uniform clothing for their students as well.
They sure do already have non-uniform clothing.
Yes, but they're already spending on that. It would be, training a uniform would be a issue to what they're already spending.
But they don't, you don't need to, you don't need to get a whole closet full. You really only need a week's worth of.
Five shirts.
Yeah, you really only need a week's worth of clothes.
Yeah, I did a lot of research on it since you had suggested it, and that was one thing that seemed some districts said, oh, yeah, it saves us money, but then most, a lot of them said, well, it doesn't, because my my student is still wearing their regular clothes after school, so we're having to buy the uniform just for school and then afterwards. Some of the arguments I know make sense. I'm not sure, from what I was reading, some of what they were saying, I'm not sure if it applies to our district or not, because I don't know if, I do not have the experience to know if you have students getting bullied by other students for what they are wearing or stuff like that.
Well, I'm sure we do.
I guarantee it.
Every district has that. But I remember we did have uniforms for a while. I can't remember what years it was though.
I don't think that we had uniforms. I remember my sophomore and junior year, it came up twice to the board. And I remember we went with Mr. Schumacher, the student council officers went with Mr. Schumacher to different schools, my sophomore year, so ninety-five-ish, ninety-six?
I could have sworn Sammy was still in school, so late two thousands? Was there a year, I could have sworn I had khaki pants and black poles.
I don't remember.
I can't remember.
I don't think so. I know it came up when I was going to high school here and we, and it was not found by the board. And I don't remember, I, I wasn't involved in the school in two thousands. So I have no idea, but I don't think so.
In one of their articles I was reading, there were a couple districts where they had a uniform, but it wasn't a, you need this shirt and you need this. It was this color.
Right, and that's how my niece, all my niece's nephew go to a school like that. It's just really, it's jeans with no holes and polo shirts.
Well, and this one even said, some of the districts, it didn't even specify polo shirts, but it said solid color shirts of a select couple, and I was like, oh, if we did that, it would be white, black, or red. It would be awful colors. But there were some districts that did that. Well, we have red, black in the photo.
White.
Okay. But I, you know, I know it can be done a few different ways. And I do, you know, I know from having been in military school, there is, you don't have that. But I have to wear it.
Right.
I'd also would be, I'd be curious to know, to get the opinions of parents on this one, since that would be the one that's going to be.
I wonder why we just chose seventh through twelfth graders? Did we pull staff members?
Well, we just, we just, we just wanted to, yeah, we just wanted to start with students.
Okay.
This is a, we wanted to take our time with this.
Yes.
We don't wanna rush through it. So we got student input first, but we can absolutely, we can, we can have a survey for parents. We just asked us.
I mean, all stakeholders, right? I mean, reach out to parents, reach out to staff members.
I think what's good about this is the students kind of set the tone. It just kept it very simple of, you know, you want surveys.
It's somewhat very colorful with their comments.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but you know, I mean, I even see this as a great writing opportunity for our primary kids, you know? It's a great writing assignment.
I think it would be a great writing assignment.
Parents and staff, create a survey, who's end of parents and staff?
Okay, you can come up with something.
Sure.
But also back to Ms. Olson's original point, I do think we have a dress code, it needs to have, it needs to be applied fairly uniformly.
Sure.
And I'm not sure, you know, I know one, one concern I've had about that, about a dress code everywhere if there has one, is who is enforcing that? Because to me, it's not appropriate for a male teacher to approach a female student about what their dress is because of the optics of that and what it turns up. So then it becomes a matter of how do we keep a uniform? Because if we have twenty different teachers doing it, they all have slightly different subjective lens. And if we had one or two people doing it, it would keep the lens the same, but same time that might, those same one or two people have other jobs they're doing. It could overwhelm them.
The way I'm looking at this, overwhelming, like I'm sure we all thought students were not gonna like this.
Yeah.
You know what? Put it on them. If you don't want uniforms, you're gonna follow the dress code. Because if we're gonna keep getting repeat offenders, more violations, nobody just, just ignoring it, then force our hand.
Because the students aren't following those rules.
Force our hand.
Yeah.
We, I tell you right now, if we did that and students kept repeating violations, I'll be more than happy to say, yes, we're going to uniforms. Because there needs to be some consistency and some control.
Yeah.
And especially, you know, with the ages of students we've interviewed, they know what they're putting on. If it doesn't, you know, conform to the dress codes, it's got, whether it's got, you know, obvious cuss words or anything else, they know when they put that shirt on. No, that's not.
Now, this isn't to stop anybody's expressiveness or creativity, because there's quite a few comments, students concerned about that. That's fine, I understand that. But there's still rules.
And a few people in town have talked to me about it, and I can't speak for them, that they were concerned that it doesn't, doesn't really hide the economic inequalities between students, because some students would only be able to afford two uniforms. Therefore, they're coming to school, not being able to afford to wash every night, coming to school looking drenched in their classrooms.
Well, and this isn't anything about a personal height difference, and I understand the whole economy of purchasing uniforms, but that will be another avenue we can try to figure out for most families.
Now, it was interesting, one of the people commented that the school, if we do it, the school should buy them and the school should launder them. And I thought, well, we don't have the facilities to launder them as far as.
Nope.
Eric's house.
My dryer ain't working right now.
Well, we wanted to share with you all of the feedback students gave.
Yes.
And this helps us going forward, and that's why we wanted to do this. These stakeholders first, get their feedback. Okay, now let's go to the next set of stakeholders.
Sure, absolutely. So we have a student that's not following the dress code right now. Whoever knows, like I say, teacher, staff, from the office, they go home, someone has to bring the clothes, correct?
That one I will.
Because I know I, for one of my kids, like, oh, hey, so can't wear school. All right, I'll bring some clothes down. Start bringing clothes or taking them to change. You know, you start making it where parents gotta start coming picking up their kids because I want them to wear it, or just start policing that at home better.
Sure.
And I understand things can be really hectic in the morning, but you know, it just, don't wanna drop the hammer and go nuclear on the whole thing. You know, we use it as like a progressive thing here.
We have T-shirts, old football T-shirts, or the, then it's at some point or something, the box frozen and it wears the soap at the top. We do have those that they put on and then they return it at the end of the day. So that's been helpful. And obviously, winter's always, winter's always helpful because everybody's in jackets or sweatshirts.
Well, even in the summer, it's wearing hoodies every day.
There's that too.
Yeah, and two, remember there was one district that rather than uniforms, they simply said, nothing but logos. And nothing, no sunscreen, and that kind of eliminated a whole category of like, okay, you're not gonna show up with the pot leaf on your shirt. You're not allowed to have any logos at all. Have it, turn your shirt inside out and put it on. But that also hinges on, not all of the, most of the logos are not things that would be problematic and hinges on their self-expression.
Carolyn, as a teacher, how, have you, have you worked at a school with uniforms?
No, but my daughter was in a school that required uniforms when she was in grade school.
I went to a high school that we had to wear uniforms and going, so half of my high school, we wore uniforms and then I switched to a different high school that did not wear uniforms. And I noticed a huge difference in the way children acted wearing uniforms versus children acting not wearing uniforms. And I just didn't know if you saw that.
I haven't experienced it as a teacher. As a parent, I loved it because there was no drama in the morning
Yes.
about what she was gonna wear to school. It was the same thing, and so it helped make our mornings run a lot smoother. But that was, that's my view as a parent.
So then we'll get some more input from parents and.
Sure.
Parents, teachers, yeah, maybe even some of the younger grades. You know, I'd love to hear what their thoughts are.
Yeah, they, because they're just, they're just, this is how, how I see it.
Yeah.
Hello, Shibutou, Mr. Rodriguez.
You know, I've, I've recently had a very nice discussion with some of the kindergartners here. And they, they are very intelligent and they have an opinion, and I'd love to hear their opinion.
This one makes your brain stop.
It opens words.
You know, explaining what that means. What does a uniform mean? What does it mean to wear a uniform? It means a great conversation for them to, you know, have and think about and share their thoughts on.
Sure. I just liked the one comment where somebody said Dylan would look good in them anyways. Well, one article I read was about a school in China, and they had, one point down, they had formal uniforms. And then in the eighties, they all went to like tracksuits. And the person was like, I loved it. Nobody looks good in the tracksuit. Everybody's equal. So is everybody over discussion on that topic?
I know, I thought that too.
No, I'm good.
I'm good. And next item then is discussion of electronic payroll system.
Mister President, members of the board, board members have requested a report discussion on the district moving to an electronic payroll system. So I'm just gonna share with you some information that I was able to obtain and will still continue to get more information after today's meeting, okay? So I spoke with the Alter Valley School District Superintendent, Dr. David Duon, phone conference. They had eighty-six employees. Frontline certified absence and substitute management is sixty-nine hundred dollars for a year. Time clock plus for classified attendance, check-in, log into any computer on campus onsite to start the check-in process for classified. It's costing his district twenty-three hundred per year. He shared accountability for absence reports for certified and classified, very efficient. Cost is based on employees. Bowie Unified School District in Cochise County, twenty employees, Mister Dan Erickson Superintendent, we had an in-person meeting. He shared with me they have time clock plus. Administrative oversight and accountability. For example, he said your principal or your site administration can do random checks any time of the day to make sure that it's being done correctly. So there's the accountability part. He also shared with me payroll becomes more efficient, more time on other critical duties like mandatory state, county, and federal reports. Nogales Unified School District, six hundred and seventy employees. Spoke with Mrs. Midas Uniga, their human resources director, a phone conference. They have frontline certified absence management and substitute management. Cost them twenty-seven thousand seven hundred. They have, because they have a much bigger employee base, so. Chronals for time management system is based on a number of sites. Nogales Unified has twelve sites, so it cost them fifteen thousand dollars. Both systems interface with school ERP pro, formerly Visions, formerly known as Visions Tyler. Costs based on employees. Sarita Unified School District, Dr. Manuel Valenzuela Superintendent will have a meeting with him and his HR person. They use time clock plus for classified employees. Sunnyside Unified School District, Mister Jose de Stalin Superintendent will meet with his contact person. They have frontline absence management. Sunnyside Unified School District, Mr. Jose Gustalum Superintendent, will meet with his contact person, they have frontline absence management and substitute management for their certified. Frontline is used by Alter Valley, Nogales Unified and Sunnyside Unified to certi- for the certified absence and substitute management. Time Clock Plus is used by Alter Valley, Bowie, Sawarita, classified automated check-in. Just a comment for me, that if Bowie Unified School District with twenty employees can have an automated system, um, so can Aho Unified School District. I believe it's possible. Uh, from talking to the different administrators from five different districts and three counties, it's it's more efficient. Example of all other districts throughout Southern Arizona and several counties, Pima, Cochise, Santa Cruz, and and what was shared with me by every, every administrator in each district, that it's positive change and it helped them move forward, but very critically, it's also, it's something that's overdue that each district came about. And when they started doing it, it just, more efficiency, better accountability, reports that can be generated, and any given moment to check on.
And it almost sounds like to me that the cost would be offset by the personnel hours we already have, but then putting towards the paper payroll and such that we have. That's gonna cut down the amount of time they're dealing with, because that's gonna almost offset whatever the cost might be.
So um, like I said, uh, I'm gonna meet with Sawarita Unified School District, talk about their time clock, and I want them to go over with me in person, so I can see it in person. And the same thing with um, Sunnyside as well and Nogales, to see their frontline and the, and that the interface, from what I understand, the frontline system, certified interfaces with visions, that's another critical piece. And so uh, wanna have as much information as possible before we make the the most informed decision, but uh, it sounds like accountability and efficiency. And also what what came, what was shared with me by, by several of the administrators is 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 professional, it's 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 a level of professionalism to where it's just what other districts are doing.
True. How many students does Bowie have and how much do they pay?
Bowie has.
Oh, not students, teachers?
They have twenty employees and a hundred students.
Okay, and they pay him?
He, he, he does not have that form yet, but um, he said he would get that.
Okay. Gonna do the math and get an estimate for how much we pay based on our number of teachers?
Sure. Absolutely.
Um, for the ones that are based on site, number of sites, would recount as one site? Or would recount as one site for elementary, one site for middle and one site for?
That's a good question. I'd say at the most, two sites, but probably one if it's all of our, we're all on one campus. Um, when when Nogales comes to mind, because I was in Nogales, twelve sites is correct, they have uh, ten school sites, the administration building and the support services buildings, those are the twelve sites.
Okay, then I figured.
So it would be one site.
I was saying, we are on one campus, if they were defining a site by the school, since we're unified schools.
Our classified boys serve both high school and elementary.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's, yeah, that sounds like that could say was even more, if we were to look at the site by site option, that would say, a good option, that's one that works as well as any of the other.
And I'll ask, I'll ask those questions when I meet with uh, Sawarita and Sunnyside, to get more information in person.
Yeah, it does seem like it simplifies and makes things more efficient to do it. Any further discussion on that? Okay, next item is the discussion on the second board goal.
Yes, uh, Mr. Hopkins and members of the board, um, what I wanted to share, uh, once again, I wanna just use this as preface, this this discussion with, we are following the the lead of of ASBA, they provided this training. Um, January twenty-seventh, actually, Ms. Julie Bacon, the leadership manager, shared with Ms. Olson, Ms. Rodriguez and myself, to just focus on three goals, to focus on three goals and have them be efficient. So what you have in front of you, what what I wanted to do is is uh, from the last meeting, I typed up for you to have, and and this can be, you know, can be a work in, a work in progress, or if you like how it looks, you can leave it how it is. Uh, but the governing board goal, goal one, the governing board will receive beginning, middle and end of the year student data with a focus on reading scores demonstrating growth on the DIBL's reading benchmarks and measures of academic progress, MAP benchmarks. Instructional strategies, resources and professional development such as beyond textbooks, professional learning communities, formative assessment, reteaching, data analysis, and then class training will be implemented to support reading growth. What I wanted to do is provide to you artifacts that show that, so you can see that, and and following the lead from Ms. Bacon, that the board goal helps provide direction and collaboration with administration, so that you guys know it's a goal, but we're also following it and we're working with it. It's not just stopping here at the meeting, it's continuing day to day. So activities to support goal one, I put down, Beyond Textbooks Professional Development on Professional Learning Community for Beyond Textbooks Leadership Committee, January twenty-fifth. Beyond Textbooks Professional Development on PLC Retaching from Beyond Textbooks Leadership Committee, February fifteenth. I wanna highlight, the reteaching strategy was implemented for fourth to sixth grade PLCs by our fourth, fourth to sixth grade teachers. Starting February fifteenth, they're gonna continue until April nineteenth. It's a pilot that's taking place at the same time in preparation for the state assessment. Why not get two birds with one stone? They're doing the pilot and it's also preparing the students for the Arizona Academic Standards Assessment as well. Beyond Textbooks Formative Assessment Pilot for Secondary Teachers PLC, seventh grade team for the um, AASA preparation, but also high school math and science teachers are doing a formative assessment, starting February twenty-third to April fourth for ACT preparation. We wanted to share this with you, our 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 weekly leadership team meetings have taken a different angle to where they're now professional learning community meetings. It's it's not just Dr. Shabols, myself, Mr. Casey, Ms. Aragon. For the last two weeks now, you've had Mr. Manigo, Ms. Macarayo, Ms. Delara, Ms. Williams, Ms. Abaha and Ms. Caballero. Mr. Villa Señor has also been present to focus on the AZELA practice test and the end of the year AZELA test, but also, we're going around and getting feedback from every teacher. How how is the formative assessment being implemented? How are you doing it? And Mr. Casey and Ms. Aragon are also at the table, providing valuable feedback. We're gonna meet again this Thursday. This will be ongoing till the K eight, Arizona Academic Standards Assessment and the nine twelve ACT assessment in April. We're doing these pilots right now, so it can also help prepare the K eight and the nine twelve. We're calling it a countdown, countdown to AASA and a countdown to ACT. So that's just um, for you guys to have that, the goal you're setting, you jump right into it and follow it for the, for the last meeting to right now, so we can stay focused.
Great.
That's goal one.
Appreciate that. That's awesome.
Sure.
Yeah.
And goal two, you guys can, that's uh, you guys can focus on that now, that's that's your goal.
One, excuse me, one of the things I did have in mind, which I love seeing this, was actually kind of getting some um, input from stakeholders when we make certain decisions. Um, I know we can't get input on everything, but you know, things like here and there, we can certainly reach out to our stakeholders and kind of get a feel for um, their thoughts before we get their fingers.
Your fingers, yeah.
So I think this is a great one, um, and it ties into one of the um, themes from Ms. Bacon's training, which was um, was communication. That she did kind of point out from that that training we had. So there was that communication, there was strategic vision, but um, I think just the communication piece, reaching out to our stakeholders when we can, when we make decisions.
That should be social, uh, kind of a novel decision for the district is, you know, uniforms, we've had a few other ones where it's like, okay, this isn't something that people foresaw coming up. So that's, and it's, you know, the people of the district who would be footing the bill for it, so I didn't, there are times like that where, to me, that comes in handy to get more information from them. I'm aware that I'm not from Aho and I've been here five and a half years, and I wanna, you know, be making that decisions that are gonna impact folks economically, that are gonna struggle.
Right. And I really think reaching out to our student body, our staff members, our community members, it will really help create a nice bridge, you know, between the school and the community, which is something I think we want to be able to build, that relationship with them, the trust that, you know, we're doing the right thing for our kids. And so um, I think kind of opening up that channel, communication with our stakeholders is important.
Yeah. And like you said, not we can't, of course, do it on every decision, we can't do it, but there will be times like this one where it's something that,
Every, but.
it's more valuable to get the input from them before we make a decision. As it's been said by other board members, there are also times when it's, well, they elected us to make this decision.
Correct.
But like, like you said, like you said, with this one, I want all the input I can get.
But something like this.
Yeah.
Right, so where we can, I think we really should make an effort to reach out to.
Mm-hmm, sure. Yeah, Williams, uh, that's I agree.
So have, as a goal, have this goal tailored towards communication and like collaboration and stakeholder involvement?
Yeah, and I believe, let me think, I think it was standard one. That had the underlying theme of communication. Let me have a second here. Um, and then standard two, question twenty-six, including stakeholders when developing and revising districts' vision, but you know, even district policies.
Yes, I think, yeah, communication is one I think is, I think it's been improving here lately and I'd love to see it continue to improve.
Right.
And I think, like you said, things like doing these occasional surveys on specific topics, not only give us that communication, but it strengthens the impression in the community that we're open to hear from people.
Absolutely, and we want to hear that, right? I believe we all really want to hear.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. I had a few people say, you know, over the month, over the last month, that I'll be there Monday for the, you know, for the, for the. So, but I've, I've, you know, since I, it's not even unique to Aho, but you know, I definitely heard people like, come to me about something like, oh, go to the school board meeting. Oh, the school board doesn't care. Like, it just came to me, I'm on the school board, it came to me because I care and now I, because I'm part of a body I don't anymore. Everybody on the school board cares.
Just another elected bureaucrat.
But we don't, we don't know what you think about it if you come and tell us.
But we're getting there, I mean, uh, Saturday was was, we didn't have as many people, but if you look at the eye test, more got done, you know?
Tell you.
I think so.
I think more got done.
Like the four, four palm trees here, the Aho improvement, um, it, it looks input, people coming.
I asked, I asked her if she didn't want to work since I had to miss it, so she wouldn't.
I think there were several things going on in town on Saturday, so I think that might have.
There was, I think it was a, there was a funeral too.
Right, and it was car wash, it was the car wash that.
Yeah.
It was both. But.
Focus on, yeah, we have to, we have to stay on, on the.
Some communication, right?
But communication.
Stakeholder outreach, involvement, okay, we'll, we'll, we'll work on something.
Yeah.
And actually, I think both of the communication bills are another good example of that.
Of communication and involvement.
Absolutely.
Communication.
I think the way if we're gonna do surveys to stakeholders, as in the student body, but also putting them out to the parents also.
Yeah.
For sure, so yeah, our community members, our, our staff members, you know?
Mm-hmm, sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I can be, especially one like this, because it's the parents that are gonna be buying the uniforms.
Right.
So for the next meeting, we'll have.
I'm worried about the parents' opinion, not just some random person in the community, oh, I don't think this, well, the parents should have the most weight on it.
Right, yeah. Yes.
Thank you, you took the worst word out of my mouth, cuz usually when we do Google surveys, I have the list of the parents and guardians. And I say, okay, you can only take this survey if you have this email address, that it would be really hard to say, we would have to do like a Survey Monkey or something like that, if we wanted the community that wasn't a parent or guardian. The staff, we can say, okay, only the people with this email address can take this survey. That's, but it would be really hard to put something in the company to say, hey, you know,
Yeah, and to make something.
Right.
Yeah.
if you've been here your whole life and retired in, you know, nineteen seventy-six, tell us what you think about uniforms. That's gonna be a little bit different.
Well, me if I can take this survey, I would invite community members, you send us an email, right? You know?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they're welcome to come, to come, to come.
Right, yeah.
Right.
But the survey, for sure.
But I think for. Yeah, for this, it doesn't make sense to go to the entire community, because that, again, it's the parents and the students who would have the impact.
Right, right.
And it's each.
Right.
But, you know, if we were deciding, there are other decisions we might make, or it would be, okay, we want the input of the whole community. I think most of it is gonna be input, impact of the immediate stakeholders.
Right.
So we'll have that for the, for the April meeting, we'll have the survey results of parents and staff and other students, right?
Yeah.
The other.
So I do have, so Andrea, when we do surveys, is it one survey per family or is it one survey per child? Because I have four children in the school, so how would that work?
Um, so the, it would be, it's really good, the, the survey, the Google, the, um, on Google Docs.
Oh, I should. Set to picture.
Google Doc, yeah.
It's really good that if, um, because we do have like, you know, when we have the kids listed, I would go in before, because we did another survey like two years ago on like whether or not masks, whether or not vaccine, stuff like that. I go through Excel before I I send them out, and if there's doubles of the email address, then I take them out. So if it's one, if, even if you have six kids, it's only one survey for that particular kid.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, okay, that's what I was curious about, yeah.
Yeah, I, that's what, oh, uh.
But, but each of, but each, like each of my children though, will be able to take this?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
The student individually, yes, but you're one parent, so, right.
Okay, but the parent only the one time, okay.
So it's like one per email?
Yeah.
One per, yeah. One per, yeah, because when they enroll their child, they give their personal email address, and that's what we have on file for Power School.
Mm-hmm.
So then it gets, it gets weird, we have like three or four of these in a family where mom and dad are divorced. So mom wants an update and dad wants an update, and it's like, hmm, so it it gets a little dicey on those kinds of things.
Okay.
But we, we narrowed it down to just one parent guardian per child.
Like the, the primary caregiver essentially, okay.
Right. So whoever that is.
Yeah.
And Google Docs is really good about, if that person takes the survey, they can't come back and take the survey again.
Yeah.
And unless the administrator, which it would come from my email address, allows it.
Allows it.
But you'd be sending it to them if they didn't understand.
Right, or or if they, they, and we've had that with the masks or the vaccine ones, where they said, oh, I just hit submit and I didn't put anything. So then I would look and it would tell you the results of it, and then so you can delete that one and then we send it to that particular one.
So I'll get one of my personal, or my poor one.
And they go work one.
Okay, so any further discussion on the second board goal?
No, I think we're good.
Okay, uh, next item is the possible new agenda item for next meeting. Somebody have, would you like to suggest to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Possible to suggest.
Guessing that's what they mean by next meeting.
That one, we have, we could, we couldn't, we have a day between them, or you can suggest one, I think, for next month as well.
Next month. I can.
I think, I think last night, I mean, you made your suggestion last Monday, and that was my first question was.
And I mean, I asked for my agenda like what, a week and a half ago, two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Good, two and a half weeks ago.
Okay. So I have one, I guess, for the April one, if we can just focus on our third and final board goal.
Yes, sure. Okay, anything else? If not, then I have a motion to adjourn.
I'd love to make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
Mr. Curzridge's eye, Mr. Hopkins.
His eye.
Ms. Olson.
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Aye.
We're adjourned, we're meeting the adjourns at six twenty-one.
If you would log out of four docs or just hit exit session on the bottom, that would help me out a lot.
Okay. You still there, Laura?
I think she just left.
I thought she, I thought she said, all right, and.
But she's gone, thank you.
So call them, call them, let's see, thank you, sir.